I guess the quicker.
Well thought out.
Go ahead and call, a study session to order, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Clarification of items on the consent calendar, Councilmember Gardner.
Item number 10, which is the emergency service consulting agreement, does this cover all four phases, the cost, all four phases of the project?
It does, yes.
Thank you, nothing else.
Thank you, Mr. Petrus.
None.
Mr. Hill.
On agenda item number six, the second highest bidder has been selected as the recommended one in accordance to, under the basis of AP1, could you explain that?
Actually, it was the low bidder that we're recommending that we award the contract to. There was a protest, the second low bidder did protest the low bid, we reviewed that protest and determined that it really was without merit, and so we're recommending that we award it to the low bidder.
So the second lowest bidder became the lowest bidder after the protest?
No, we did not uphold the protest, the second low bidder was the protester, and we did not uphold that protest, so we are recommending that we award it to the low bidder.
Enterprises?
You're talking about number five, he's asking about number six.
We're on two different pages here.
Oh, excuse me, on the number six, that was a qualifications-based selection, so the awarding of that contract was based on the qualifications. We actually had done a previous selection process for a traffic signal design, and the second proposer, the one that was determined to be second most qualified, we used the most qualified firm on the previous contract and are recommending awarding this to the firm that we deem to be the second most qualified.
That just did not make any sense to me at all.
The other firm-
Let's back up. What is the basis of AP1?
The selection process, that administrative procedure-
Administrative policy one-
Right.
Is what?
That is the policy that determines how we select professional service consultants, using the qualifications-based selection process.
Which allows the qualification-based process, alright, and in the base of the staff report, it says you receive six proposals which were reviewed to evaluate each consultant's qualifications, past experience on similar projects, and availability. Through the qualification-based selection process, staff ranked the traffic signal design consultants, and the one that you're recommending was ranked number two, and then you went on to say also that the one that was ranked number one had just finished a job, had been, had selected number one, I'm sorry, someplace in here you note that they had just finished a job which you found was satisfactory, so satisfactory was not a good mark then?
No, they were, they completed the job, very capably completed the project, using the second-ranked firm was basically being able to utilize multiple consultants to do similar type of work. Because of the fact that it was qualifications-based, we didn't consider the price as part of the evaluation criteria.
Mm-hmm, but was there a price difference?
I don't recall, to tell you the truth, if there was a price difference, actually the RFP process was for the previous project, so the price for this project was negotiated with the second most qualified firm.
Okay.
The price that they did provide, the cost for the scope, is within the market for the type of work that they are doing.
Remember Mayor Bertem Hill, we do try and not isolate our work with one specific consultant, if two are qualified, even if they're close, and we've given the work to one initially, and they've completed that work, and we might look at a second that is certainly qualified to do the work, just so we're not isolating ourselves with just one consultant.
Okay, that I can accept. Councilmember Deagle?
I had also wondered about just how that policy is being applied, if we're objectively, have an objective criteria, and then we look at price and separate people by that way, or if it's really subjective, if it's kind of more like The Bachelor, in terms of who we're choosing.
It's not at all subjective, it's a process by which you, you look at each firm's qualifications, you rank them usually through a panel, and the top-ranked firm typically you'd go through, and then you'd open the next envelope, and that envelope involves their pricing, and you look and see if it's within range of what you would expect, what we would professionally expect for that type of service, if it is, we will usually go with that pricing, if it's not, we might, we might try to work them down for another price, but no, this is a very objective process spelled out in state law.
Okay, and then, Mr. Mayor, I did have a couple of items, item number 11, it is our planning commission report, and the level of detail provided by staff is that, which has been directed by the council, so the report is totally appropriate, but a resident did write to the council and felt that what happened wasn't what was reported, and that has to do with the level of detail, so I did want to provide a few more details that I think people might appreciate, you know, as we, as we know, illuminating objects at night is getting people's attention, residents' attention, and there is a sign up at Camelback that the planning commission took a look at, and I asked them to do so, now, there is an important condition of approval that they put into that light, and that is that a dimmer is installed, and that the light is turned off at a certain time, so that wasn't returned, that wasn't in the staff report, but I did pull from the planning department our conditions of approval, and we do have some teeth in that particular application, so I wanted to let you know about number 11. And then, as we get into the budget, and the seat attorney indicated this is an appropriate time to ask, the council has worked together really cohesively on a compensation, which is an incredibly difficult issue, and I want to make sure, or what I don't, what I need to know is budget over budget, what our differences look like, and it's very difficult to myself to just go position to position, so if there's one way that it can be computed, that would be very helpful. And then, secondly, as we get into our budget, in years past, we probably haven't looked at the Thailand's fund as closely as we could, so I would like to know what our projected revenues are, and what our proposed expenses and cost allocations are.
Councilmember, that's not on the consent calendar, that's maybe-
Right, but I talked to the seat attorney, he said it'd be appropriate to ask at this time for those items, thank you.
Well, there's a general provision in the regular agenda where councilmembers can ask for items to be considered on a future agenda, but the Brown Act doesn't prohibit, basically, general requests of the nature that Councilmember Deagles made.
Mr. Hen. Three items, first on item number five, can somebody just tell me quickly, what is a biofilm screen?
It's a mechanism used to treat the runoff, it's an earthen filtration method, basically.
So it's dirt?
Dirt with plants, basically.
Okay, alright, but it's not some sort of screen that's there, it's a, alright, okay, I guess, I'm on the coastal bay committee, I guess I should know the answer to that, but I didn't, so, in any event, on item number six, now that I'm driving Coast Highway more often in this direction from the peninsula, I'm a little more sensitive about the timing of the traffic lights, which I don't think is very good, and I'm, but I've lost track, have we attempted to synchronize the lights on Coast Highway roughly between the Arches Bridge and MacArthur?
Well, we don't control the signals to the west of Jamboree, those are under the control of Caltrans, the signals that are to the east, we have implemented some timing, but they are not all currently in a coordinated timing plan, this project will actually allow us to upgrade the equipment and to put those in a coordinated timing plan, at least this side of Jamboree.
Well, that was my next question, so if they aren't, then they could be better by virtue of this project.
Most definitely.
I hope that's the case.
I'll teach you where to change lanes.
Well, I'm giving you a ride home tonight, so maybe you can, you know, give me a lesson tonight. Item number 12, the, I just had a quick question, and it may have been answered, but I didn't have time to read the email, as to when the July 4th safety planning meeting will be held this year, I guess we are planning to have one, we haven't quite scheduled the date, is that correct?
We are planning to have one, yes, I don't know off the top of my head what that is, we usually try to do about four weeks before or so.
Yeah, okay, alright.
That's all. Mr. Selich.
No items.
And I have no items, so we'll go to the agenda, first item is Newport Harbor Entrance Title Gate presentation.
So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this is a presentation that was given to the Thailand's Management Committee, and it involves a concept that would put a title control structure in the Newport Harbor entrance, and I'm not giving the presentation, I'm looking around to make sure, do we have our consultant here, you want to come on up and just feel like, just like you did to the Thailand's Management Committee?
Dave, maybe before he starts, I can just give a little introduction, the Thailand's Management Committee invited Dr. Berner to make this presentation on a potential title control structure at the Thailand's Management Committee meeting, we've been looking at reconstructing old sea walls around Balboa Island as they reach their structural obsolescence, and we're doing that with an eye to building them in a manner that they can be raised as we experience increase in sea level rise, and one of the ideas that came up was that maybe we should be looking at a tide control structure, because raising the sea walls is only a potential part of it, the Balboa Island in particular, because of the elevation that it sits at, that if the projections are taken to their worst-case situation, you would eventually have to raise all the houses on Balboa Island, all the streets, all the utilities, sidewalks, drainage systems, et cetera, and so it seemed that if a title control structure was a feasible alternative, that perhaps it's something that we should be looking at, so this presentation is given to the Thailand's Management Committee, Councilman Hen and Councilwoman Gardner, and I thought it would be a good presentation to give to the full council to take a look at and evaluate as to whether it's something that we should keep in mind as we move ahead with looking at sea level rise and reconstructing the sea walls, so, that, Dr. Berner?
Councilman. As you can see, this rendering shows an artist conception of what, what we're considering would be a low-level bottom hinge gate is what we're proposing, although other types of gates are possible, there's sector gates, there's a wide variety, we thought this one would be most aesthetic in this setting, as you can see, it's between Cronodelmar and the Newport Peninsula there. Just to have it said, that Gurek is part of the Koi Group, a 7,000-person engineering company that spreads around the world, is shown on the map there, they have the largest international marine design.
You might need to speak a little closer to the microphone, or you could use the other one too, it's a little taller, sorry about that.
Very good, that sounds better. In any event, Ben C. Gurek Inc. is focused on heavy civil marine design, we've been doing a lot of work for the Army Corps, we are headquartered in Oakland, but we do have an office in Long Beach, we've been doing a lot on flood protection in New Orleans, and for the Olmsted Dam on the Ohio River, which has bottom hinge gates on it, it's under construction now. Also selected projects, I'd point out, is Monazuma Slough Salinity Barrier, we conceived of that and consulted for the Department of Water Resources all the way through, that's up on the Sacramento River, Braddock Dam was a dam on the, near Pittsburgh, Chikamoga Locks for the Nashville District, I already mentioned Olmsted Dam on the Ohio River, and we did conceptual design work for Bechtel on the Venice Storm Surge Barrier, which all are somewhat relevant, this is just a brief overview, this Inner Harbor Navigation Canal Hurricane Storm Surge Barrier is the largest civil works design-build contract ever given by the Army Corps, and it was finished in record time in three and a half years, and did help protect New Orleans from Hurricane Isaac, so it was finished in time, otherwise, the flood defenses behind it would have been overwhelmed, it's about two miles long, and it was, it's a $1.3 billion contract, we were working for Shaw Coastal, this is a, this is a rendering of the final product with a photo insert, so it's got an innovative flood wall design and two navigable passes, a sector gate and a barge gate structure, and a lift gate structure, this shows the flood wall under construction, it was all done afloat using off-site marine prefabrication, which is what we're proposing to do here, to minimize congestion inside of the entrance to Newport Harbor, this shows a close-up of the sector gate structure here, it's a 150-foot-wide pass and a concrete swing barge, it provides another 150 feet, so 300-foot pass, on this Gulf Intercoastal waterway that runs from Florida to Mexico, this shows the concrete barge gate that we designed, I'm the designer of record for about 80% of that storm surge barrier, including this, and just to have it said, it is per mile of cost, it's one of the cheapest storm surge barrier of its type, actually, the criteria for this Lake Born barrier is higher than, than most of these, outside of the New York-New Jersey concept, but it is several times cheaper than, than the storm surge barriers in Norway, not in Norway when I'm saying, in the Netherlands, and the Thames River Barrier as well, this is the Monazuma Slough Salinity Barrier, it does give you an idea of this off-site prefabrication, here's the radial gate structure was built on a grounded barge, and then floated over into position, over in Monazuma Slough, it had a lock associated with it, this radial gate structure for flow control and a flashboard structure, this shows the off-site prefabrication method used for the float in Braddock Dam, so these are sills, hollow, oops, went too far, so this is a two-level graving dock, and we made concrete shells that floated them up the Ohio River to the Monaghahela River, and it was built on time and on schedule for the Army Corps, this shows a lift-in methodology with off-site prefabrication for a part of the lock wall for Chikamoga Lock, so it was built on these flexi floats and brought in here, there's a strand jack lifting it up and placing it on a piled foundation underwater, so there's, was no need for a coffer dam to disrupt navigation here, that's why they use this method of construction, this shows the, how the bottom hinge wicket gate works on Olmsted Dam, that's over $2 billion, almost $3 billion dam, navigation dam on the Ohio River, it's about a half-mile long, and I'm the designer for this feature, and this just shows that these gates lay flat on the river bottom, or in your case, on the seafloor, so the traffic would pass over the tops of such a gate, so there wouldn't be visible, there'd be no obstruction, this Venice Storm Surge Barrier, we consulted with Bechtel in its early days, we were not the final designer of record of it, but it is under construction, does have a pile-raffed foundation, so you just float in this concrete monolith and set it down on top of a gravel bed that's supported by piles with some cut-off walls that are tied in with underwater concrete, and instead of having a mechanical lifting mechanism, this uses a pneumatic floating system, so you pneumatically blow air inside of the gate leaf, and then it floats up and can hold a six, over six-foot, a two-meter head difference across it, that's just as background discussion, this is a different type of a flood gate that uses a rafted pile foundation, shows you the operations or idea of how a bottom hinge gate could work, it's lying on the bottom, this is another type of a bottom hinge gate, it's an Obermeyer gate, where instead of floating up, these pneumatic bags are inflated, and it pushes the gate leaf up just by pressure, so the bag deflates on the bottom, and then you just inflate it, and it stands up to the head difference that you need to possess, to resist, so we consulted on that for the Department of Water Resources, most recently in the California Delta, this gives you an idea of how you can stack up multiple Obermeyer bags to get up different heads, and in fact, we did consult on Olmsted Dam for a hydraulically operated wicket gate dam, which is kind of a cartoon shown here, so there are different types of gates, this is again the Venice Storm Surge Barrier, does show the pneumatic operation displacing the water out of the gate leaf here, and this just shows that off-site prefabrication can make use of existing precast yards, this is what was used for the, we consulted on the construction of the Oakland East Bay Bridge, which used large precast elements that were building this precast yard, taken out on travelists and to these finger piers, and the large 200-ton precast concrete elements were floated into place for the bridge construction, so again, some advantages of the gates, they can be raised part of the way or all the way, depending on if you just want to be controlling salinity, so you don't have to only use it when there's a king tide, you can also use it for salinity intrusion, you could use it to cut off only the high tide, which would protect you from any influence of sea level, so say if the sea level rise went up two feet, say in 50 or 60 years, well, you could cut off the top two feet of tide, any tide, a high tide, a normal high tide, in which case, all of your boat, boat docks and boat ramps inside of all of Newport Harbor wouldn't have to be adjusted up two feet in the future, you could just isolate yourself from that problem by just cutting off access to Newport Harbor for an hour or two at the peak tide, if you wanted to operate the gate that way. So, down here, we, some of the advantages of what we think we're proposing is, we think it looks aesthetic with minimal invasive type of effect, we think there'll be a good cost-effect or cost-benefit ratio, and that'll protect all of Newport Harbor, not just Newport or Balboa Islands right now, because you have many sea walls all around, and I have seen some rough estimates, over $500 million for protecting all the sea walls, I know some of them are privately-owned sea walls, some of them are under the city's jurisdiction, but somehow, the community's going to have to be paying for that, and so this would be, would stop all of those sea walls from being built up, in fact, some of them could be removed if you wanted to, because there wouldn't be so much purpose, if you're controlling the high tides or the storm surge, you could isolate the whole area and provide better public access, and I believe that the California Coastal Commission would feel good about improving your public access to such a beautiful harbor. So we have minimal disruption to tidal action, we've kept the tidal prism the same or better, so that there will be full tidal exchange across this gate, well-defined maintenance plan, in fact, there should be very little maintenance to the gates, and we feel it could be adaptive for future conditions as they're realized, so you could design the gate to accommodate future conditions after, say, 2000. So again, the biggest problem is your king tide, but of course, you have to add on top of it the storm surge, as well as any El Nino event that might raise up the sea level for several months, I remember back in 89 or so, there was almost a two-foot sea level rise for one to two months around this area, and there hasn't been many El Nino events for the past 15 years, so since it's a cycle, you would expect it to come with increased frequency in the next 15 to 20. you would expect it to come with increased frequency in the next 15 to 20 years. That's the way it's storing up the energy in the ocean right now. Also, you're supposed to consider wave setup, as well as some wave runoff and, and future sea level rise, which is some uncertainty associated with that. For the past 15 years, all the predictions for sea level rise have been ratcheting up higher and higher. In fact, I'll show what NOAA's recently come out with. So this just shows that there are many sources to sea level rise. There's thermal expansion of the ocean, there's runoff from the land, there's some glaciers and ice cap melting, but the biggest source of uncertainty is the ice sheets in the Greenland and the Antarctic. All of those estimates were too low in the past, and they are showing here some nonlinear increase, and this trend has continued up to the present day or for that. And that's why many of these curves here are inclined as they increase into the future. The lower curve is from the Army Corps guidelines, and the upper curve is from something called a semi-empirical method by Vermeer and Ramsdorff, which is now being referenced by the IPCC. This is one of your consultants, Everett International Consultants, was comparing the current guidance from the state of California, the Coastal Ocean Protection Commission. So they did a study, and I'm sure you guys are in receipt of it, showing that they recommend that you consider sea level rise. And you can see down here ago, and now most of the current AR5 is up in this range already. And it may be 15 years from now, it may go up again, in which case you'll be asked to deal with that problem at that time. So also, the National Research Council, part of the National Academy of Sciences, has also made this statement customized particularly for California. You can see the sea level rise guidance here. The normal range goes up to about 1.6 meters at the upper end of this range, and you can see it's not uniform along the whole coast. It increases down as you get down towards Newport Beach, and that's for a local effect. It says that as the glaciers are melting in Alaska, there should be less sea level rise further north. If anybody has questions on that, you can ask me afterwards. It's a technical issue. So as far as, there's some question about, you know, how, how quickly such a proposition should be put into effect or not put into effect, and I really can't speak for the local community down here. It's, it's simply a factor of how much risk you want to be exposed to or not. Right now, FEMA does have a nine-foot base flood elevation level based on a earlier analysis from the past, and they are continuously upgrading those evaluations, and they're permitted to by law whenever they want to change that criteria in any community. When they get to it, they can add on to it. So if they felt that the storm frequency was going to increase, they need to give you a little bit more storm surge or a little bit more wave height crest, then they'll do that, and they'll, they'll pass that on to you. Also, they do have a resiliency criteria for a 1 in 500-year or 0.2% exceedance probability, and they're, that, they have that over 11-foot for Newport Harbor currently, which means that currently the sea wall around Baobab Island is, is between nine to about seven and a half-foot elevation. So if you did have a 1 in 500-year event, or if a 100, 500-year event becomes more frequent, say with climate change, then you could overtop the wall for Baobab Island, and since the middle of the island's lower than the wall, you'd impound water in there, which is not considered to be a resilient behavior. So you're not formally complying with FEMA's guidance on that, so you're always subject to negotiation with them about what type of rate deal they want to give to you, or what type of grade of improvement. So to really get total independence from, from FEMA, you would need to consider what criteria they're going to be applying in the future, from a resiliency point of view and from this base flood elevation, because all the real estate prices here would be factoring that into consideration. Anytime you sell a primary residence, it's going to be subject, they have to consider the, the new criteria that might be imposed for the time that they own that. Also, FEMA is now allowing them to increase their, their flood insurance rates since January 2013 by 25% per year. For primary, primary residents are given some grandfathered clause out of that, but for all businesses, say on Baobab Island, they are subject to that rate increase. And anytime you make a major improvement on the property, or if you sell it, then you're subject to a large rate increase. So again, as to how fast you do or don't want to improve it, you know, sea level rise is a nonlinear thing, so you could put off, you can negotiate a deal with FEMA now and live under those terms, but sometime that's going to be coming back to affect you, and it would affect, you know, the negotiated price of anybody selling their home today, because they would factor that into the future. So also, I just, as I point out here, it may be likely that the floodgate solution might be easier to gain approval for the California Coastal Commission. If you just do a limited amount of sea wall raising rather than the whole system-wide, I'm sure they'd give you a permission to do that. As soon as you have a, a large community impacted, they're going to be asking a fair amount of questions on that. If you have to raise the sea wall above plus 10 or 11, or maybe even higher in the future, they're going to be wondering, you know, what are you doing to public access? And they'll be asking you pointed questions on that. Whereas with the, the tidal gate, that would not be affecting any This is this NOAA new guidance that they just came out in December. It does have sea level rise going up as high as two meters by the end of the century, whereas the current California guidance is closer to 1.5 meters. So again, but they give you a range, and you have to decide how much risk you do or don't want to take. So they don't really tell you prescriptively what you have to do, and in fact, the current guidance that FEMA gives you, they don't include sea level rise in the current rates that they give to you. All they do is reserve the right to raise your premiums in the future if and when they decide to impose that criteria on you. And, and not only is, is there sea level rise, but it may be a, you know, scientific consideration, but as the sea level goes up, the tide also increases. There's a multiplier, there's a feedback. So when you run your hydraulic models, you'll see that the higher water produces less friction, so that the tides, the extreme tides become higher and the extreme storm surge. So there's a little bit of a double dipping going on here for the criteria that needs to be applied as you get out into the future. And of course, you do have to combine these in some kind of a formula for what type of combinations you might have, how much runoff do you combine with the different cases? And it's not totally clear to me that FEMA has included all of those factors to their satisfaction in their past analysis that gave you this nine-foot base flood elevation. So this is their, FEMA's firm map, and you can see this base elevation of nine here, and actually you can see over in the corner, they have a hashed zone going up over that. This is another one of the studies that shows a lot of the streets being flooded and some of that going on the Newport Peninsula. So you can see it's much larger area than just Baobab Island. And, you know, this Zone X that's called out there in the upper corner, that shows, that's the Zone X is where you have to deal with this 0.2% return, or this 500-year return period, showing it goes up over 11-foot elevation there. It's only a small area here, but it's not so clear that, you know, even if you build up the sea wall around Baobab to plus 11, you'd still be subjected to that risk, because it's not cross-statch here. But as you can see here, as I said, you know, the wall around Baobab Island is not uniform. It's, it's built up higher towards the south, and that's probably because most of the storm surge is there, and it's a little bit more exposed to waves, so it needs to be higher. So there'd have to be some corrections for all of those that are going on. This shows all of these storm drains, hatches that you have all around the island and along the Peninsula. You wouldn't have to be operating those so much if you had the, the tidal barrier, because you wouldn't be subjected to these inundations with the high tide, so you wouldn't be needing to be operating those. But it does give you an idea just how much miles of, of sea wall that there is to be dealt with, and a lot of that, again, is, is private sea walls that would have to go through on a parcel-by-parcel basis, so. Some, some of the issues that I changed since my last presentation, because it wasn't so clear. There's this Newport Shores area back near the Santa Ana River, where the water, where the ground elevation's a little bit lower, so we're proposing that somebody could raise the, the road elevations there by adding asphalt ridge in that area. It's only a couple feet low, so there's some evaluation, some of your past consultants showing water can come in that back way, especially when there's a lot of rainfall. But we're again proposing a bottom hinge gate at the entrance to Newport Harbor. And then you can also see that there is a low area on the Peninsula where you can see the ground level here is closer to nine to 12-foot right in this area. And the Dutch have been very good at putting in grassy, sandy mounds, so there are methods for raising it in a fairly natural setting. So this shows the asphalt area here near this Newport Shores area, so I just show going across the Pacific Coast Highway here, and then you link over, the beach is actually higher than the roads are. So all you have to do is put in some asphalt and spread it out far enough so the traffic isn't affected, people won't even know it's there. This would get you up to plus 15 is where I'm proposing to take the top of the floodgate. And this shows this concept that's widely recognized in the Netherlands, where you put in some sort of a sand mound or dune in the low area of the beach, and then put grass on it with a clay layer underneath it. It acts as a barrier then, so that wouldn't be too intrusive at all, in my opinion. So that would take care of this area. Again, you'd put this grass sandy berm, should use this pointer, in this area, and then some asphalt over here on the street, and the gates over here, and the rest of the Peninsula is high enough Higher criteria, you'd have to put this sand berm in more places and build the gate higher. But, you know, those are possible, but I don't want to be that intrusive. This shows the area where we're proposing the gate and shows a jurisdictional line. It's all on the inside of that line. So this is the natural, natural bathemetry going across there. There's a natural channel, about minus 21. I think the designated channel depth is about 20-foot. So here, we do show the, the height, proposing 15-foot height, and we're showing the, maintaining the channel depth, and we talk about, you know, criteria for tidal ranges and inundation and freeboard and all those engineering Do have, you know, these little berms off to the side, we thought would match what the jetties look like, but those are negotiable if you wanted to have that part not sticking above water, that's possible.
The pump station is on the Big Corona side, from your design concept shown in the first slide. How big is that?
Well, this station over here? Well, that's on, that's on the Newport Peninsula side.
Okay, that's then from your, but from the initial, there was a, on the very first slide that showed your concept, you don't have to go all the way back right now, but there was, there was a building on the Big Corona side, and it looked quite substantial.
Well, I'll, I'll have to get to that. But the last slide shows that rendering again.
Oh, and then we'll just wait till then.
Okay, thank you. But I think on the Corona del Mar side, as far as I know, there's only just this slide gate across this, there's a promenade there, so the water could run around there. So it is a standard process, there's a standard flood-resistant slide gate that's used all around the Midwest we're proposing there, and this does show. And this, this is our more deluxe edition, where we have some like a seven, a 600-foot pass, and, and we do have bottom hinge gates along different parts of it. I'm not saying it has to look like exactly like this. This one, we just have a 300-foot pass down to 20-foot, and then we bring up the shoulders like this, just to try to match the tidal prism a little bit better. And these areas off to the side could either be permanently at that elevation, or they could act like swing barges and swing out of the way if there was some need to get large vessels through here, which I'm not aware of. And we think that maintenance would be simplest with these pneumatically operated Obermeyer gates, but that's all subject to discussion and negotiations. Mechanically operated wicket gate might be a little bit lower initial cost, and as I said, it was used there. Now, I guess you're referring to, to what this building is?
Yes.
That's a, I think that's something that my draftsman just put there, because he wasn't thinking too clearly.
All right.
I, I think it was intended to be
That relieves me.
It was intended to be over on, on this side. I, I think that my engineer didn't, or maybe I didn't quality control it enough.
Thank you.
Yes. But again, that, that is a pneumatic pump. It's not a water pump. It was intended just to get enough air pressure in there. These gates normally go up and down, up in about 15 minutes or 20 minutes, and then down the comparable amount of time, and they can have water going over the top of them. That's the frequent mode of operation. So if you didn't want to raise them all the way up, you could and just allow waves to spill over the top. You have a very large area on the inside here, so it can impound a fair amount of storm water rain runoff before it starts to affect your, your harbor, or even any wave overtopping wouldn't have a, a large impact on the water. And this is, it shows the gate up. This shows an alternate with a smaller gate area. It would change the, the channel a little bit more, but it does provide the full tidal prism exchange for water quality. There would be a, some amount of savings there. And so there, there are different paths forward, depending on what the city does, or if they're interested in it or not. You can do your own study. I have talked to some public-private partnership developers who would be happy to finance the deal and get a concession from you and, and operate it for so many years in exchange for some sort of parcel tax revenue, or some sort of premium insurance savings, or you can just finance it yourself. It might, it would probably take some bond measure if you wanted to do it, because there is some capital-intensive investment at some point. But certainly, we could start up the process. I know that you'd want to have some comparison with your sea wall option, but right now, this is at a conceptual level rather than a fully comparable line-by-line comparison level. And that just shows main offices, so I'm open to questions. I hope I haven't run too much over schedule.
Thank you. Are there any questions to the speaker? Mr. Hen?
Yeah. You, you seem to imply that the Peninsula doesn't really need much by way of help in terms of defense against sea level rise and whatnot. I live on the Peninsula and own my home there since 1994, and I've had two wave run-up events in that period of time. My house is probably 150 yards from the ocean.
Yes.
And so I don't feel so secure about where I live. I'm at 10th Street on the Peninsula, and you were talking about a low area up there near the Newport Pier.
Up here now.
Yeah, so I, I kind of feel like there needs to be more help on the Peninsula than you're implying. Can you respond to that? Because obviously, because if the, if the Peninsula barrier isn't sufficient, then...
Well, I'll, I'll repeat what I said, is that, is that you could easily add in this grassy mound that the, the Dutch use, and not just limit it just to this area here near the Newport Pier. You could extend that further on down here. As you say, you're subjected to the wave run-up, which is affecting your house, which was not the primary purpose of those sea walls, so I was competing with the sea wall, so now you want to have a larger service. This is already an unsolicited proposal to you already. So I didn't want to be too intrusive and start changing your beach settings and saying I'm in control of things. So you can certainly give to me direction, or to anybody direction, and set your criteria. I don't think that a grassy mound of some two or three foot there would, would be intrusive, but I, I didn't want to make that judgment. Certainly technically, it could be Certainly technically it could be easily added to this with a minimal amount of cost which would stop that wave damage to the peninsula. So I take your comment to heart.
Councilman Gardner?
When, not this most recent dredging by the Army Corps, but about, was it eight years ago when we did it before? And there was a big community discussion about whether we were going to put it on the beach and, or put it offshore. And we put it offshore because particularly in the area up by the river jetty, but I think in other areas as well. One, they were going to cover the groins. And two, people were saying, all right, we've got enough sand already. We don't want it higher. It will impact our view. And so this is a new issue though. And this is one of the reasons that I thought, I wanted us to start thinking early because I think we will change our attitude. And there will be many opportunities when we are dredging that would, we might previously have put it offshore where we might want to start establishing berms. And we need to start educating the residents that it's not, that yes, you might lose a little view at some point, but it may also protect your home. So this is valuable. Two other points. I think that as this comes down, the Coastal Commission's going to be less of a concern because it's not going to be Newport Beach asking for protection. It's going to be the whole state. So there are going to have to be some major changes. It'll be national, in fact, because we've got coastal areas all over on both coasts. The other thing is, the only real downside I see to this in terms of cost is that the advantage of a piecemeal approach is it is piecemeal. You can do a certain amount to the seawalls and then see what's happening. This one, you don't build half of a dam. I mean, the bridge, your gate. You build it all. And so you do have that big initial expense where the other way you might be able to carry it out over a longer period and then really evaluate whether the projections are, where they're coming in, the high or the low end. Although I think, I think. So that's just a consideration. And we haven't done the studies to really see what the cost would be to do it for the whole bay with all the other things. And that's an important part.
Mayor Curry, I was wondering if you could explain a little bit about the operation of the device and navigation? How many periods a day will boats be able to go in and out and not affect the tides and the sea rise?
Well, of course, right now, your inundation problem at the moment only happens once every few years. And so, and the inundation period only happens for a few hours. So for the current situation, if you were to have the gate now, it would only be for a few hours once every few years. And the king tides are known in advance. They're astronomical. So you could schedule it and look to see whether there's a storm, a little bit of storm surge, and you can raise it up as high as you want and cut it off. Now, in the future, as I said, if you didn't want to, if you wanted to minimize the influence of sea level rise, say you followed the state guidance or some other guidance and might be 1.4 meters, 1.5 meters. As I said, it is possible to cut off 1.4 meters off of the high tide of every, of every day, the higher high tide, in which case the water level inside of the harbor would never go up that high. And so all of your boat docks wouldn't need to be adjusted to go up that high and your seawalls wouldn't have to be adjusted. Or all of your utilities that are in the ground that are going to be seeing higher groundwater levels of salinity, all the foundations to your houses, all of that water's going to be kept offshore or, you know, to the side of the peninsula. Otherwise, in the future, as sea level rise goes up, even if you have a seawall with a cutoff wall in it, it's a hydrostatic condition. And so the groundwater will come up to the same amount as the sea level as long as you have the sandy conditions here. And it, you know, there's a little bit of drop-off, but not much in sand. It would go for, you know, miles inland. And they're finding that in the East Coast.
I think what I'm trying to get at is would we have to end up scheduling arrivals and departures into the bay at some point if we're talking about sea level rise?
Well, that's all subject. If you want to use that option, then yes, theoretically, you know, the Thames River Barrier already operates this way. So it cuts off the high tide to stop all that economic investment up the Thames River, which is billions of dollars of waterfront real estate. So if you were to do that, then yes, at the high tide that you know every day, you'd just pre-program the PLC, program logic control, and the gate would pop up for that hour, which is you're just cutting off the top of the tide, then it would go down. So that would be the extreme case, this extreme obstruction that I would see, you know, in 2100. It might be up for an hour once a day. But normally today, you would only have it up for one hour every, whenever the king tide happened.
Mr. Selig?
Yeah. I was hoping that you would give us a more precise answer than you did on, you know, when, if this is something we want to consider, when we would have to get serious about it. You said it's, you know, based on the, on the risk that you would assume. But I was hoping you could either give us, based on these projections, either a danger or a level in the water rise or something more definitive.
Yeah. Well, I can give you a variety of numbers just standing here. But if you're happy with your negotiations with FEMA and you're happy with the situation that you have now, and you were to raise the seawalls up to plus 10 elevation so you're to get that much of sea level rise in the future, and you were to use this current state guidance for sea level rise, you'd probably go out to something like 2030 or 35. And at that point, you know, those systems would start to become much more questionable as to whether or not they're going to be working and whether or not this storms, this tidal barrier that we're talking about would then provide more protection. You know, it wouldn't just provide plus 10, it would provide up to plus 15 for the same price. So if you're willing to, you know, not, you know, right now, I don't know how much the residents mind the restrictions FEMA's putting on them or not. I don't know how much that, that's all subjective question. But, you know, if you're happy with what you have now and you don't think FEMA's going to change that criteria to 2035 and you're only worried about just sea level rise, well then you have that amount of time before you would lose some of the benefit that the tidal gate's going to give to you compared to a seawall.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much. Let me open this up for public comment. Come to the, if you have to, if you'd like to speak, please come to the podium and speak. Sir, you can sit down and we'll invite Mr. Tampa to come up and make public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I'm loving being here today. I didn't know about it until this morning. I would have dressed a little better. What we're, the people in this room, the people in the audience and the people up here on the panel have the power to do something about climate change to affect what happens. This man has given us a very good explanation about how we don't know about the future. If you look at the federal government as an example, the Department of Defense, the Navy Department, the Agriculture Department, everybody is talking about climate change, but nobody is addressing it in the legislature or at the administrative level, other than a few words at a State of the Union message. The truth of the matter is, a carbon tax is going to be passed at some point in the near future. If it happens this year versus four years from now, it can make a huge difference. Because right now, we're at 380 or 397 parts per million. The acknowledged level that's really safe is 350. Scientists now, because they know they can't get back to 350, have sort of given up 350. Now they're saying 450 is safe. I'll stop. But I'm going to say this. I talked to Ed Royce last week. I've talked to Dana Rohrbacher two weeks, three weeks, four weeks ago. There is no way that every Republican in our Congress doesn't believe in climate change. Everybody in the federal government's talking about it, but the Republicans aren't doing anything. I've actually joined the Republican Party. I am now a member of the Grand Law Party for three weeks. I'm going to do everything I can simply to pass a very small tax. We spend trillions and trillions of dollars on insurance right now. Insurance, and I'm talking worldwide. We don't spend a dime on our insurance for our children's lives. We have 15 years, according to James Hansen, who was at Claremont just a month ago, 15 years to avoid going to a level like, to a level that is so dangerous and we lose control. We pass these things called tipping points. Now, he's given us some, an open-ended deal here that you could, you know, we can, we can postpone this decision, just like Councilman Henn suggested, that we look at this thing or was it at Selig. We have time. And this panel has more power than you realize. Because if Ed Royce and John Campbell and Rohrbacher hear from us, because we've gotten educated on the subject, it doesn't take a lot. But you can't depend on the press, the media to do it. We don't get good information from those sources. Today, there was an article in the LA Times talking about how it's going to be bad to fly an airplane across the Atlantic Ocean because there are going to be these sudden updrafts of air. And apparently those kill people now. And there are going to be more of them. But we're talking about this minuscule amount of danger to this minuscule problem. If we don't do something in the next 15 years to lower our carbon footprint, we're leaving the children that's, a life, a world that's unlivable for our children. There's, thank you.
Other speakers, please come forward and state your name, please. Come to the podium. State your name. You have three minutes.
Thanks. Hi, my name's Lee Cassi. I just have a question. I love the idea and I love, but I love tides. But what about earthquakes? Are these self-adjust, some sort of adjusting gates that if, even ones we don't really feel just seismic changes?
I think she means tsunami that results from an earthquake.
Well, no, I wasn't thinking this was a tsunami gate. I was thinking with, there's a shake that changes the gates out of alignment.
Okay.
So then they come up and they're, you thought there was a 1.5 tide you were adjusting for and it's really now not, so.
Well, I'll just point out, one is that the tidal barrier wouldn't stop the tides. So even if, well, I say 2100, we're cutting off the top of the high tide, you'd still get all the lower high tide and all the low tide. So you'd still get tidal fluctuation, water exchange and. Fraction of the time that any earthquake might happen. And one, it's got water on both sides, so there isn't much dynamic amplification from an earthquake. It's a very low-profile structure and there's nothing really to fail from it. It's only resisting a small head. You can say a 1.5-meter heads a lot, but it's something an inch.
Out of adjustment, not when it was up, but when it's just lying.
Well, when it's lying there, it's just like the seafloor. It just, earthquakes just move, mean the earth is moving and this is low. It's right, just you dredge a little and put this back in. So it does whatever the earth does. So I don't think there's going to be much of a problem. You'd have to have a fault crossing it. And there is no fault at that location.
Okay.
For it not to return back to where.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Very further audience members who'd like to speak on this matter, please come forward.
My name is Conrad Baumgartner. I live at 134 Topaz on Balboa Island. I don't think any of us question the fact that there is some degree of global warming. However, I feel that a consultant such as this gentleman obviously has a self-interest in proposing the extreme on the high side. And I recently discovered an article in Investors Business Daily which stated that there is quite severe evidence that in fact, based on actual empirical data on what has really happened, is that they're quite high in their estimations, men like this. But of course, it's their consulting business and they want the job. So I think we have to go slowly with this and look at the real empirical evidence, not just the projections. I'd be happy to, I would like to see this distributed. I think it's a rather interesting article that pertains exactly to this point of just how bad is the situation and just how rapidly are things changing? Because the bottom line is, at least from this article, is that it's at a much slower pace than what the projections would indicate. And in fact, the article goes as far as to say is really that the, that the UN and all the people involved with this should reevaluate what their estimates are. It's a little bit like, you know, obviously consultant like this, it's just self-interest to say you're going to have a major problem. But it's kind of like acting the fox as it's time to open up the chicken coop. That's not necessarily a neutral position. So if I could, could I submit this to someone?
Leave it with the city clerk right here. She'll see if it gets out to the city council. The city clerk right here. Thank you, sir. Are there anyone, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please come forward. State your name.
My name is Jim Dastor and I'm a resident of Balboa Island. I wanted to follow up on what Councilman Ed Selig said about timing. The question I would like answered is if, let's say, a decision was made today that this is something worth pursuing, maybe I'd like to ask Dr. Berner, how much time would it take between now and when the gates would be operational, you know, looking into all the permitting and all the other, other timeframes involved?
Thank you. It's not a question and answer. We're just taking comments and then we'll deal with it. Please come forward now. All right, thank you. We'll close public comment. Mr. Selig, do you have anything on this?
Well, you know, it seems to me that this, as we move ahead with, with our look at sea level rise, I think that there's certainly time to deal with answering a lot of the questions. I'm still not quite sure I understand when we reach the critical point that we really need to get serious about. But it certainly seems to be something that we should be considering as we move forward.
But let me, I'll ask Mr. Dastor's question for him. How long would it take to implement something like this, given the permitting? And can you give us a sense of the magnitude of cost here?
Well, I would say probably for something like this, I would imagine the permitting phase could take up to 10 years. You had to get the Army Corps involved because it's a flood protection. So there's a NEPA process. And if it was pre-approved, of course, the design would probably take one year and then the construction would probably take a minimum of three years. So I can't state definitively how long the NEPA process would take, but it is California. And I imagine there'd be a lot of biological studies and there'd be tidal studies and they'd want to have some backlog of information on that.
And what does it cost?
Well, the cost, I guess that in what I presented last time, I did say the construction cost could be as high as $250 million, but it could be less than that depending on how many features you want. And normally the design is something like 3% to 4% of that. That would include the NEPA staging. So 4% of 200 or to $250 million would be the total cost.
Thank you. Well, that was an interesting presentation.
Yeah, I would just like to thank Dr. Berner for coming, coming down and making the presentation. I, you know, it's something that when it was originally proposed, I couldn't conceive how it could even have any, not from a cost standpoint, but just from an implementation standpoint, how you would practically do something like this. So it's very interesting to actually see how something like this could actually be done here in Newport.
No, that's all right. I think we'll keep this idea in the back of our minds as we address these issues going forward. Thank you very much. There's no further comments on this matter. We'll move on to the next matter, which is the Balboa Island FEMA flood insurance issues.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor Curry, members of the council. I'm Kim Brandt, the Community Development Director. We're going to continue to talk about issues surrounding our harbor. And we are going to focus this next item on more current day issues regarding Balboa Island and our floodplain management ordinance requirements as it affects to construction or remodels of our existing homes in that area. Simone Georges, our building official, will give you a PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you and good evening. This evening's presentation is on the Balboa Island and FEMA insurance issues. Just to note, I did ask FEMA to attend tonight and they do send their apologies for not attending. And they've blamed it on the sequestration. They're only limited to, they're limited to travel for emergency purposes only. But we, later in my presentation, I do have Arnie Mello, who is from the private flood insurance side, who will give a brief presentation also. A little history on the, what we have today. Back in 1968, the federal government passed the National Flood Insurance Act. And subsequent to that, they passed the Flood Disaster Protection Act of 1973. Back then in the 60s, with regards to flood insurance, flood insurance, it was almost nearly impossible to get. So the federal government passed a flood insurance. So the federal government passed a flood insurance act to provide affordable flood insurance for the nation. But with that comes caveats. If the federal government is going to subsidize flood insurance, they want to ensure that the rest of the nation is doing what they can to reduce damage due to flooding. And flooding is the highest cost of the federal government in emergency situations. Subsequent to those acts being passed, the federal government did a study of the Orange County area from the late 70s all the way through the 80s. In 1989, they certified the flood insurance study, and that establishes the flood, the special flood hazard areas which are affecting the city of Newport Beach. Because of these, the, these flood map overlays, the city adopted a flood plane management ordinance in 1993. You can see the, the map here, that which was presented earlier from the previous speaker, but the biggest concern that we have is Balboa Island. And if you can see where Lido Island is not in this special flood hazard area, and Balboa Island is, and it's strictly because the island sits a little bit lower, Balboa sits a little bit lower than Lido does. The, let me get my mouse here real quick. This red zone, FEMA considers this red zone as the still water level, and that still water level is at nine feet, and they call that the base flood elevation. The way it's explained to me that this base flood elevation, or the still water level, is kind of your average tidal height due to storm. It's not a storm surge per se, but again, it's, the water swells, and you establish a height of about nine foot. It doesn't mean that there's no wave action. It doesn't mean there's no energy generated from the wind, but as far as just kind of establishing a base flood elevation, it's been established at nine foot. In addition, I've always thought in the past, I always thought there was giant storm surge, and that's why it affected Balboa Island, and the answer was no. There's, there's not that storm surge that we typically think about. And the reason why is because the mouth of that, the mouth of the harbor is very small, and it doesn't allow that, that much wave energy to get into the harbor. That's pretty much the limit of my understanding of how these maps are generated. Again, Balboa Island is where our biggest concern is. So what are our issues? We have many issues, and I kind of try to summarize it all here. Balboa Island is entirely covered by the special flood hazard area, and we know that. Almost all the properties on the island, the personal properties are below the base flood elevation of nine foot. So I went back, and we counted in our records, who is, how many properties do we have at the 9.0? And right now, we only have 10 at 9.0. In the past, when people develop properties, they built it at different elevations because the base flood elevation was a little bit lower. How many properties do we have on the island? Over 1,700, and only 10 are at the 9.0. So how does a property owner that has a parcel that sits in the flood zone, how do they get affordable flood insurance? And the city voluntarily participates in the National Flood Insurance Program. So the federal government understands that obtaining flood insurance can be problematic, and it has been problematic in the past. They offer a program, and it's voluntary for the city of Newport Beach. So we voluntary participate in the program, along with about 550 other communities in the state of California. What's key to understanding the NFIP is that, that it provides insurance to all participants. And that's a little bit different than going with private insurance, and Mr. Mello here a little bit later will kind of explain that. NFIP is federal. They subsidize it through tax dollars and reduces the cost of flood insurance for the participating communities. Currently, we have 1,600 residents that are policyholders in the city of Newport Beach. And unfortunately, I don't have the stats as far as, are that, is that everybody on Balboa Island, or is that throughout the peninsula and the island? I just don't have those stats right now. I did request it, though. But again, there is a caveat. If we're going to participate in the NFIP, the federal government wants us to reduce our flood hazard. They want us to, in a sense, mitigate any potentials for flooding. They don't want us to exacerbate the problem. So that why, that is why we've adopted the flood plane management ordinance, which is in our, out of our municipal code, Chapter 1550. The current ordinance, the purpose of the ordinance is to minimize bodily and property losses due to flood conditions, to minimize expenditure of public money, and to minimize prolonged business interruptions. Again, it is just to minimize damages due to flood hazards. Our ordinance was approved by FEMA in our, more recent round, in November 2009. And our first adoption was in 1993, and since then, we've amended it about four times, really because the federal government has changed their federal laws, and so we've kind of had to make some, some minor tweaks to our ordinance. Inside the ordinance, it includes compliance factors. In a sense, it states that the staff will set up a procedure of how to be in compliance with the FEMA guidelines. It establishes definitions of substantial improvement and current value, procedures implementation, and as always, there are variance and appeal rights. I've underlined the term substantial improvement because it's very important in understanding how this program operates and how staff administers the, the program in the city. Substantial improvement, once a project is deemed a substantial improvement, that is the trigger of raising the dwelling unit above the base flood elevation of nine foot. We have a lot of older properties that are still at the six-foot, seven-foot range, and if they want to do any type of substantial improvement, that's going to be the trigger, where they're going to have to lift that structure above the nine-foot base flood elevation. Substantial improvement. If the project is determined to be a substantial improvement, then the entire dwelling unit will need to be raised up to the base flood elevation of 9.0. And that is kind of the key to continuing to participate in the NFIP. So how do we determine substantial improvement? And I got this, all these, this kind of equation here, and basically, it is a ratio. And if the cost of improvement divided by the current value of the structure is equal to or greater than 50%, again, this is a ratio, then you're deemed to be a substantial improvement. Therefore, you need to raise the structure above the base flood elevation. If it is less than the 50%, then you're not, quote, "a substantial improvement."
What is the source of the equation? Is it something home-generated or the federal provision?
It's federal, from FEMA's guidelines. The cost of improvement is basically the cost of work. Your contractor submits a bid to you, and that's the cost of work. Current value is the value of sticks and bricks. You know, what is that replacement value of that dwelling unit, of that structure? So it's basically the size times the average construction cost per square foot. That value is then depreciated due to age. And here's where we've been having a struggle at the staff level, is that our average cost in the past was very low, and it wasn't reflective of true conditions. In addition, that our depreciation schedule was very restrictive, and for example, a 50-year-old house would be required to be depreciated by at least 60%. The value, the current value does not include the value of the land or the site improvements, and it doesn't include the value of the business income that is generated. And the reason why the land is not included in the current value is because the National Flood Insurance Program does not insure land. It only ensures the building. Therefore, they only value building, they don't value land. This is a chart of what we did in the past and what we're doing now. In the past, we established the, the average construction cost to be $160 per square foot, and that was established back in early 2011. And unfortunately, that was based on a valuation table that we use to calculate building permit fees. So it's a, it's a table that's used currently, but it's only used to calculate fees for permitting and plan review, but it's not a true reflection of actual construction cost. So from just professional judgment, we know realistically, it's much higher than $160. And I've established it at $300 per square foot as an average construction cost throughout the community, and that's much more in line of what true costs are. Of course, some costs are lower, some costs are higher, depending on the level finishes, the type of building you want to build. But as far as an average, this is based on staff's professional judgment, I've come up with $300 per square foot.
Do you have to have that certified by FEMA, or is that just totally within your discretion under the ordinance?
Under the ordinance, it is my discretion.
So they don't have anything to say about that?
No, but I did pass it by them and told them that we're going to use 300 bucks per square foot to see if they had any comments, and they were comfortable with that.
So how did you arrive at $300 a square foot? Why not 310, 350? You know, what was the basis of that? And is construction costs fluctuate due to other economic factors? How are you going to be dealing with that in the future?
As far as coming up with the $300 per square foot, that's based on my own professional judgment. That is based on my background in development. That is based on my background as a licensed contractor and a licensed real estate broker. So it is based on my experience that I've come up with a $300 per square foot. If council is looking to definitely maximize that number above the $300 per square foot, the higher we go, the less comfortable I am of using a higher number. And I would suggest that we will just hire a professional cost estimator to kind of sample maybe five projects that are currently under construction, and sample those costs and come up with a value. So that's how the $300 per square foot came from, based on my professional expertise. As far as increases in construction costs, those are published, and we would look to increase those, the, the number on an annual basis.
Is there any kind of quantitative thing out there, like the engineering record index they use for major construction projects? It would be something that this could be tied into, so that we're sure that we're reflective of what current economic conditions are?
The E&amp;R magazines, which is the engineering magazine, does publish on an annual basis those numbers. I haven't looked at one of recent, so I couldn't tell you specifically if it has that data, but that's something we can definitely dig into.
I contend that all you'll be is wrong. If you want to really know what construction cost is running, you poll 10 contractors that build nothing but custom homes and ask them what their actual construction costs are running. They have today's information of today's market, and that's the only way you can be accurate. Everything else is just a complete guess.
You know, I have, I have another thought. Just in my personal experience, you know, the broker that I work with on my own property insurance, every so often, they reappraise the home, the construction cost, the replacement cost. And I think that's a pretty common thing. So I'm guessing that there's probably quite a lot of information out there, if there were a way to access it, on, you know, insured And I'm guessing that with the higher-end construction that goes on in most of these properties with the high land values, it could well be.
Right. Couple things to keep in mind is that land is not included in the value, and that we have to depreciate the, the current value of the structure. So those are two other additional points to keep in mind.
I know land is not included in the value, but it, you know, high land val-
I'd also offer, our, the city retains a federal lobbyist on a monthly basis, so we pay him a lump sum per month. And he had contacted me in connection with thanking a congressional office that was helpful on our dredging project. In speaking with him, he indicated to me that FEMA, that this was overhauled in the past year. And I'm thinking, you know, he volunteered to do an analysis that he's doing for other clients, and that might help us too, to see if there's sort of any insights he has that would give us some flexibility and some wiggle room with all of this.
And from my discussion with the FEMA reps, it is true that the, a new law was passed back in July 2012 that overhauls this. As far as what the changes are and how it affects us, they weren't sure at all of how the, the new laws affect us. But we will definitely look. The, the presentation, one other element that we recently changed back in March was the depreciation schedule. In the past, we had a much more restrictive depreciation schedule, where now it's a little bit much more user-friendly, I would say, and the new schedule is published online on our website. We took that information from FEMA's documents, the, the more relaxed depreciation We have to depreciate it by 20%. Per the old schedule, for a 50-year-old structure, we had to depreciate it by 60%. So we definitely improved our depreciation schedule. A few pro forma examples of where we've been and where we're at now. So this is just a quick analysis of, from kind of our, our old structure, where you took a 2,000-square-foot home multiplied by $160 per square foot, depreciated by 60%. And you only can take a little bit less than 50% as your maximum improvement value before you hit that trigger of substantial improvement, and you're only left with an improvement value of $64,000. And today, with the change that we've made of increasing the average cost per square foot to 300, relaxing the depreciation schedule, the same calculation for that same home, we've changed it now where you could actually go up to $240,000 of improvement versus in the past, which were at $64,000. It's almost an increase of a factor of four. Here's a few more examples. You can see here a home, a 2,500-square-foot home. Your improvement allowance in its say was only $80,000. With the new procedure we're following now, it is at $300,000. Again, at a 4,500-square-foot home, in the past, your improvement allowance was only $144,000. Today, it's up to $540,000. So we've made definite improvements. So the other topic of discussion is private flood insurance, and I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Arnold Mello from WNC First Insurance Incorporated. He has volunteered to come here from Chatsworth. He's not under contract, and he's actually doing me a favor, coming down here and kind of addressing private flood insurance. And I'll hand it off to Mr. Mello. Arnold, maybe you can start by discussing how you look at risk for private flood insurance.
Absolutely. And actually, we have quite a few residences on Balboa Island right now on our, oh, sorry about that, in the private program. Basically, what we did is this program we put in place in the year 2000. We didn't do much marketing of it. We put it in place in California and Florida, and you can imagine, from a risk standpoint, that's pretty diverse. So what we did is we said, okay, 80% of the FEMA risks or NFIP risk will never have a climb. So if we do a little bit of underwriting, we basically, for lack of a better term, can cherry pick the good risks. That's how we looked at it. So when we underwrite a risk, what we're looking at is, number one is the location. Less concerned with the location than we are in Florida, because we're not dealing with the heavy storm surges from the hurricanes and things like that. So when we take a look at that, we also look at the elevation. Now, I know a lot of times, people don't have elevation certificates, things like that. We have tools available where we can get a lot of the information online. It might not be 100% as accurate as a official elevation certificate, but in most cases, it's very accurate. We use Google Earth. There's overlays. It gives us elevation of the property, and we basically put in criteria what we feel comfortable with in California. On the location, you know, we kind of look at, you know, the lay of the land as a way to put it. In most cases, we're, we're comfortable with one to two feet of negative elevation, and we will still consider the risk. In Florida, we wouldn't consider those risks. So, and that would basically take into account, probably, and I don't know the exact numbers on Balboa Island, but a lot of the homes on Balboa Island, you're going to fall in that negative one, negative two, and still be within our guidelines. Unfortunately, the program is currently under suspension. We anticipate that it will be back up in about four months. What it is, is the insurance carrier, which is actually- What it is, is the insurance carrier, which is actually American Modern Insurance Group, their parent, which is Munich Reinsurance, is auditing everything that they're doing with flood, and they just don't want anything put on there until they're finished with their audit. Once that takes place, we'll be back in business. But that's just a short-term little roadblock. Just so you know, we've never actually had a claim on any property in California for flood. So it's worked out very, very well for us. We paid claims in Florida, as you can probably imagine. And that's strictly on the private side for what we call our admitted product, which is admitted in the state of California with the Department of Insurance. Private flood insurance that are not admitted, they're basically through Lloyds of London. Again, those products are open still, because they're not going through American Modern. Like I said, it's a pretty simple process. And we look at each risk individually. We pull them up on Google Earth. We have an inspection company look at the property after we're on the risk. And like I said, it's worked out very, very well.
Mr. Mello, are you familiar with the characteristics of Balboa Island?
Yes, I am.
And do you write, or would you write flood insurance on Balboa Island?
We've written quite a bit of flood insurance on Balboa Island, as a matter of fact.
And lenders accept the private flood insurance in place, well, I guess it wouldn't be in place of the National Flood Insurance Program, or would it?
That's an excellent question. I get that question all the time, actually, from the lenders. What they look at is FEMA has established some guidelines that basically said, private flood insurance is acceptable if it meets these six criteria. Our policy is basically a me-too or a copycat of the FEMA policy, although we did add some additional coverages for loss of use, which FEMA does not have. So, you know, in the event that you're out of your house for a home, there's $5,000 or so a coverage, you know, for you to stay in a hotel or such. So we meet those guidelines. A lot of times, I spend a lot of time on the phone educating lenders, because they're not used to seeing it. It's new to them, whoever is the loan servicer. So, you know, I send them copies of policy, send them guidelines, and it goes through. We do have one bank that won't accept it. Flagstar is the one. And that's, as far as the lenders, that's the one we're really concerned with. I actually never have an issue on the commercial side with the Lloyds of London product. So go figure that one out. So that kind of addresses that.
At the meeting on Balboa Island, a number of folks got up, and I forget the numbers, but they quoted rates that, from the commercial side, that were much lower than the FEMA-backed rates. Why is that?
Well, first of all, we feel, when we filed the rates, we feel it's actually an indication of the risk that we're willing to accept. The other issue is, as you're aware, that FEMA raises rates pretty much every year or every other year. Those rates were filed with the State Department of Insurance in the year 2000, California being a state where the rate, you have to be pre-approved before you can increase your rates. Obviously, with no claims, it would be almost impossible for us to even consider a rate increase in the state of California and get it approved, and we're not going to do that. So that's really where that came about, why there's really no. Accounts, especially if they have a positive elevation, can make the insurance absolutely dirt cheap. I mean, even on the commercial side.
It's been suggested by some that the city should opt out of the FEMA program and just let the commercial market handle all the insurance. Do you have any feelings on that? Is that a good thing?
An opinion?
Is it a bad thing? Are your rates based on us being in the FEMA program?
Yeah, the issue that you could have is, when you no longer participate, basically, what the consumer would be looking at would be to shopping this, or their risk on the open market, probably with an unadmitted carrier such as Lloyds. That is very volatile. The rates could be very inexpensive or could be extremely expensive. We actually do quite a bit of business on the city of San Francisco, which is, they're not a participating member. It's generally more expensive than FEMA on a, per policy basis, when they are no longer participating. So from that perspective, I would see the cost most likely would be higher. And then you run into the instance where somebody does have a claim, FEMA will always take you. They become, at a point, once they've had a flood claim, where it becomes very difficult for them to get coverage. That's my opinion.
Are the FEMA rates for California influenced by what goes on in New Orleans and Florida and, you know, the Carolinas and that sort of thing?
Yes, they are. I mean, it's true risk sharing, if you want to look at it from that perspective, because...
Well, they're looking at the total risk pool. They don't look at the California risk pool or the Orange County risk pool.
That's correct. As a matter of fact, I was working with the city of Visalia, which was, they were running into a similar situation. They had a history of very low losses. In fact, they think since about '84 to present, they had about $84,000 in total losses in flood insurance. And they actually were generating about $5 million a year to FEMA in flood insurance premium. They asked FEMA to come out and remap, because they'd made some substantial improvements. Well, FEMA came out and added more properties into the special flood hazard area. So they came to us and said, would you put together a program just for the city of Visalia residents? And we went back to our Lloyds brokers, and we did put together a program, basically saying, you know, if you're a city member, there's no underwriting, you know, based on the coverage, here's the rate. And generally speaking, it was in the 70% range of what FEMA was. Like I said, automatic qualifying. The reason it ended up not going through is the city, I think rightfully so, was concerned about potential liability if something went wrong, because they were essentially sponsoring the program, so.
I'm not sure who's best to answer this question. If we were to opt out of FEMA, and at a later date decide we want to opt back in, what happens? I mean, is that possible to do? Do you get penalized because you are out, and now they look at you as a brand-new set of risk that they apply the highest possible underwriting?
And if I asked that question to the FEMA rep, and they said that it did happen once in Florida, a community opted out, but they jumped back in within two years. So there is a process. The process, I want to say it's less than a year to get back into the system, but it is possible.
But is the re-entry with FEMA, is there a punitive aspect of that compared to where you were before you opted out?
No, there is not.
And there's no prohibition on opting back in?
Correct.
Or any, if you opt out, you got to stay out for five years or anything like that?
That's not my understanding correct.
I would just theorize that we would have to readopt the floodplain management ordinance to make sure it's current with all the latest federal requirements. But that would, we would have to do that if we were to maintain our status in the program. We have to update it when the federal government requires us to do so. So at such time, we opt out and then opt back in, we would have to readopt the ordinance.
So it might be possible to put together a special underwritten program for Balboa Island, and as long as we're comfortable that the insurer is going to be there and that they're in good financial shape, and they'll pay the risk, and the lenders will accept them, blah de blah de blah. There's a whole list of conditions about whether or not that's an acceptable solution. But you could, that is a potential strategy, is to put together a program where every resident of Balboa Island was automatically qualified under this special underwritten program. And if there were a problem later with it, with approximately a year's notice, we could re-enter FEMA and still have universal coverage for the homeowners after the private system went wrong or went out of existence.
That is a possibility, yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Well, I gather, I mean, I'm sorry that I don't know what sort of fees are charged by FEMA. I'm sure that they're dear. But the real issue is the fact of you have to raise your home. But isn't the point of the whole FEMA program to try to make us more flood-averse, so that by simply disregarding it and saying, well, we're just going to talk about the insurance, we are in some ways defeating the purpose of trying to avoid flood damage, because we're trying, they're trying to encourage us to make these improvements? I mean, I know that's an unpopular statement, but that is, there is a rationale behind it.
Right. Do you have anything else in your presentation before we wrap up?
Just one more slide as far as the next steps go. Possibility of re-analyzing what FEMA analyzed as far as the still water level. That approximately costs about $50,000 to do that analysis of the harbor. It takes about four to six months. We can also go back and poll the contractors, try to raise that $300 per square foot higher by different methods. And number two here is that if number one is questionable, or the results of number one are questionable or negative, there's more studying that can be done at an additional cost of up to $200,000 in some additional time. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff before we open up the audience? Mr. Hiddle.
Well, I would just, it seems to me that maybe there's two different issues here. One issue would be, what should we be doing, if anything, to better protect the island against flooding? The other issue is, is there some action that we could take that would allow our Balboa Island residents to access less costly flood insurance? Those are two different topics. And it seems to me that, I mean, we could do both. I mean, we could opt out of FEMA, but still have regulations that would better protect the island, if we so desire to do that, totally independent of working to set up a specialized insurance program, which would lower the cost for anybody that wanted to take that other insurance program on the island. I mean, they don't have to, you don't have to do one or the other, I guess is my point.
Well, there's actually a third issue, and that is that, based on this audit that FEMA did in 2010, which forced us to change our procedures, that the ability to do even very modest remodels to homes became very difficult for folks on Balboa Island. So there's, you know, as Councilwoman Gardner said, the object is to get the homes raised and rebuilt and protected by floods, but by the same token, there's an intermediate step where some people want to be able to remodel their homes. And before the new factors for the value per square foot and the depreciation schedule were just recently put in place, it was very difficult for people to just do very modest remodels to their homes, and to the point where some people that did not want to have to tear down a home actually had to tear down a home, because they were virtually unable to remodel their home even in a very modest way. So I think that's kind of a third issue that we're dealing with here.
Do raising seawalls or installing tidal gates have the same effect as raising a home to the nine-foot level?
You know, I'm not an expert, but my understanding that raising seawalls, there's a possibility of getting a map changed and being out of the flood zone. I'll let the doctor answer about the tidal gate. One other additional caveat that I want to add to is that if the city opted out, it'll be the entire city opting out of the program. You can't parse it out to different parts of the area. In addition, with being in part of the program, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of going beyond your question, in being part of the program, if there was a disaster that's due to flood, there is some small amount of federal funds available. For example, if there was a disaster, FEMA would say that first you go to your insurance file a claim. If the insurance does not cover the entire damage, then they would push you off and get an SBA loan. And if SBA loan, if you don't qualify for the SBA loan, then they would give you a FEMA grant. And that grant is approximately, maximum about $30,000. But I needed to add that to the conversation. You don't get the additional FEMA money?
If we weren't a part of the FEMA program, and we did have a massive flood, I mean, everybody else just says, well, federal government commended, we have a national disaster. I say what?
No, if the president signed a declaration that it was an emergency order, a natural disaster, they would fund those services for debris removal, police, fire. But if a property owner said that, hey, I was in, I was in a natural disaster, I need some federal funds, they're not going to write a check. They're going to push you off to your insurance company and let the insurance company deal with it first. Maybe at the very tail end, at the most, you'll get is about $30,000, $32,000 from the federal government.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So who is mandating that they must purchase insurance? Obviously, if there hasn't been a claim, there's really not a very high risk, realistically speaking. So do people have the option to shrug their shoulders and say, I'm not going to get insurance? Or is the lender requiring it?
It's strictly the lender-driven.
Okay, so if you were to own your home, though?
You don't need flood insurance.
Okay, thank you.
But you can't remodel it unless you meet the code standards?
That's correct.
So it is, if you own your home and you try to remodel, then the city, because of this relationship with FEMA, is requiring?
Correct.
This, okay.
I got one more question.
Mr. Selig.
Simone, with the new construction costs per square foot and the new depreciation schedule, do you have a feeling for what percentage of the problems that you've been aware of over the last few years are being solved by this? I mean, resolving 50% of the issues that kind of come before you?
Oh, at least 50%, if not higher. You know, I'll throw out a number of 80%. I mean, it's really been a huge relief for the development community to be at the new numbers that we're at now.
I'm sorry, just one more question then. But if you do a teardown and you build a new home, then you have to comply with the higher elevation standards.
That's correct. You're at the higher elevation at nine-foot.
So new construction would be in compliance. And I guess I have one other question for the insurance fellow. The special program that was put together for this other city, did the private insurer require that the homes be raised to a higher level in order to get the private insurance?
After doing our underwriting work on this, basically, we basically said all comers, that as long as you are a, it's within the city limits. So no, we did not require that.
But based on your knowledge of Newport Beach, if you were to look at the conditions here, might you require it?
I don't believe we would. I don't believe we would.
Why?
Well, you look, just, basically, what we look at is, what is the chance, first of all, of that 100-year flood? Even though FEMA has designated that this could happen, okay, so if it does happen, you know, where is it going to occur? How many houses are going to be affected? And the thing is, is typically what we've seen in California is, when you have flooding, we have not seen where, like you get on the East Coast, where you get massive storm surge that basically takes out a whole community. So we, the flooding we've seen has been here and there. Now, besides this program, we also do lender-placed flood, and that's where we gather a lot of our underwriting information, where we're doing flood insurance for these massive, on a massive scale, for, you know, the bank-owned properties and/or the first-place flood insurance by the banks. Our data, basically, in this area is not supporting that, that we would be seeing, you know, huge communities or huge neighborhoods all being inundated by a flood all at the same time, even on Balboa Island. Because, yeah, there are areas that are lower than others, but there's a lot of areas that are higher. And again, one side of the island is probably more prone than the other side of the island. So, yeah, generally, I don't see that being an issue, where we would require it. And we've never required it in the past. As a matter of fact, when we have somebody who has done, because we're not FEMA, we can basically make our own underwriting rules. In the private program, if somebody has done substantial improvement, we give them the option, do you want to use the pre-firm or the post-firm rates? Whatever is favorable to them. Because that's a FEMA thing. That's not our underwriting rules. So we don't have that requirement. But, you know, we're not also managing the floodplain either, so.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Let me open this up then to the audience. Are there members of the audience who'd like to speak? Please come forward and state your name. You'll have three minutes to speak, and we look forward to your comments.
Once again, my name is Conrad Baumgartner. I reside at 134 Topaz Avenue in Balboa Island. I happen to own a house that was built in 1924. It's on a raised foundation. I'm quite positive, nothing's even come close to flooding. So I am a little bit different than... So I am a little bit different than maybe some of the other homes. But number two, I'd like to state that, in terms of the $300 per square foot, I've been a licensed general contractor for 35 years. I'm not very active here. I was active, very active in the San Fernando Valley. I just completed a home a year ago at 110 Collins, and trust me, it was well in excess of $300 a foot. In fact, I think one of the, probably the biggest builder on the island individually, if you went to ask him personally, I won't mention his name, but I know he is quoting to clients, $400 a foot. So that's fairly probably close to the reality. And one thing about insurance is that replacement insurance, usually your foundation doesn't burn down. You know, so there's, there are other issues in terms of what the cost associated with replacement really is. I would also like to point out another thing that's, I think, important in terms of dollars, and that is that my insurance went from 1944, $1,944 under the old FEMA policy. I did pay a one-time $300 fee to the gal that placed my insurance, who's this agent out of San Diego, but my base rate is 726. That's a big difference, 726 to 1944. I have one other comment, and I think this dovetails back in. And I would like to give you a letter that I gave to Simone at the March 16 meeting, and I also have some questions to pose here. I won't take all of them, but it came to light at the time of that meeting on the 16th, that when we asked about the FEMA certification of potential flooding, it came to light that they, but by Scott Wild, I believe is his name, that they, FEMA ignored, that the jetty would have any effect at all on controlling storms, which we know it does because it limits the throat. They ignore the fact that Balboa Peninsula is basically a barrier island, and they also ignored the fact that we have an existing seawall. So the nine-foot criteria, according to this gentleman, who's your consultant, they took none of that into consideration. In fact, he said at that meeting that, truthfully, he said, there is a question in terms of how they came up with their designation. With that, I'd like to submit these current letter today and the other letter. Thank you very much for your time. And also, if you look at this FEMA handout that was presented on the 16th, it doesn't say anything about depreciation at all. It says 50% of current market value, current market value. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please come forward.
My name's Craig Riffle. I'm a contractor at Riffle Construction. Do most of my work on Balboa Island. I live on the peninsula. I just had a couple of questions. First of all, Simone, this amazing difference, this whole thing is awesome, especially for a renovation contractor, which is what I am. I don't do new homes. $300 range as a, as a remodel contractor is not out of the market for the new home. You'd be, you would be up into the $400 arrangement for remodeling a house or doing the work that's being done. The 300 does seem like a reasonably, maybe it's a little under, but it is there, much better than what it was. Because, first of all, it's sort of a redundant, you're going to get the money back as you, they're going to charge you at the city $300 a square foot for the work you're going to do. So it's sort of a trade-off, even, either one. Am I correct on that?
I didn't understand your last point, I'm sorry.
The $300, if I get $300, when I do the permit, they're going to base my square footage of work I'm doing at $300 a square foot?
No, we'll base your permit on $160, which is a published valuation.
And there's more money in there. My main question up here right now, since I've got three minutes, the maintenance issues were not really addressed. Windows, roof, you mentioned at the other meeting that these would be taken out and not be included in the $300 a square foot issues. And I want to see if that's clear still, if that's going to be done?
We're finalizing a document that states what's included and what's not included.
And when is that available?
Friday.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abrams, come forward, please. Don't need to come, you can come, queue up here closer in the front. You don't have to stand back there.
Hi, I'm Don Abrams. I'm a real estate broker on the island, and I wanted to also say that the new guidelines are a huge improvement. Many clients and friends have had a real hardship under the old guidelines, and this is a big improvement. We want to thank you. Second, with regard to Councilperson Gardner's question about raising the homes to the nine-foot level, this is nice to think about, but as someone pointed out, only eight homes are at that level. That means 1,442 homes are not at that level. Approximately 10 or 15 new homes are built every year, so it's going to be a long time till all the homes are at the nine-foot level. So that, that's not really a practical solution even, even, and plus, people seem to like the old homes, as do I. In fact, my last point is, I own two homes on the island, and after the last session that you were at, Councilperson Session, Selich, a lady, Becky Byron, who I think works for this insurance gentleman, Mr. Mello, got up and told us that she could offer us insurance. So I had just received a new bid from FEMA for my home for $2,200, up from $1,500. So I contacted her. She quoted me $695 for both of my homes, which I was happy with. And when they were submitted to Mr. Mello, they were turned down. The first reason he gave was that the program was being reexamined. And when I questioned why that happened right after this meeting, the second reason I was given was that my homes weren't at a high enough place on the island. Well, of course, no homes are at a high enough place, although my, my home on Little Island is at the highest point on, on the island. So I'm just questioning this, this company. I think the idea of us obtaining private insurance, or the city self-insuring Balboa Island, or coming up with a way to insurance so we don't have to pay exorbitant insurance fees, but, but can still get loans, is a good goal. I'm questioning the sincerity of this company, all of a sudden canceling this program as soon as many of us try to enter it. So I just wanted to leave that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams.
Thank you.
Please come forward.
Good evening. My name's Joe Panino. My house, I currently live at 126 Abalonee. And my home is, was originally built in 1928. And the question I have for the panel here is the fact on the depreciation schedule that we're looking at. I have, I'm a bit of a do-it-yourselfer type guy, and I did some elevation shots on my, just about a year-old structure, wood frame structure that's currently standing there. And the maximum I'm off is 3/8 of an inch from one corner of the existing structure to any of the other corners of this building. 3/8 of an inch, and it's almost been one year. Why, at, at what point do we have to pick a number, 50 years, whatever it is, and go for a greater depreciation? Because in my case, with almost a 100-year-old structure, I would, I'd mark that up against some of the newer constructions that's probably going on, on the island there. So I think maybe that would be something we might want to reconsider and make, make some adjustment with. That was it.
Thank you, sir. Other speakers, please come forward.
My name's Diane Bach. I'm from Turquoise on Balboa Island. My two cents is, I think that the FEMA program is, feels punitive. I understand it's great to raise the new houses, but to force all the, the older houses are going to be goners, and that will make me very sad. I also think that, I had a second point. Well, I can't think of it now, so I guess that's it.
Thank you.
You can email us.
I know what it was. It just feels like it's flying in the face of some commonly-held values, preserving the older houses, and also just preservation of general resources. Why knock down, if you wanted to remodel your kitchen, why, why make them knock down a whole good house just, just for one section? That's it.
Dale Burner, I just wanted to answer the question that had been raised about whether or not the tidal barrier could lower the base flood elevation. And that's dependent on whether the Army Corps of Engineers certifies that the way it's going to be designed and operated would do that. But it had, that is done in Louisiana and other places where the base flood elevation is controlled by the measures that you take. So it is possible.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Tom Houston, 206 Ruby, Balboa Island. Mayor Currie, might I ask Simone a question? I know you said earlier, no question, answer, but...
Just ask the question in general, and we'll let Mr. ...
Anecdotal evidence. I've lived on the island for 50-plus years, and I'm flabbergasted that the city of Newport Beach is concerned about a flood. Maybe 100 years ago, but it, it seems to me that this is a massive overreaction. And I point out that all of us have lived around the area, aware of Huntington Beach, the flood plain between Costa Mesa and the hills and the older parts of Huntington Beach. The folks there in that flood plain, and again, I have anecdotal evidence, longtime 50-year friends, have bought in the area between the levee, if you want to call it that, or the edge of the river, and the bluffs of old Huntington Beach, and they were required to have flood insurance. Subsequent to them purchasing the house and paying for the flood insurance, the channel of the San Ana River has been improved, so it carries more water. Prado Dam has been improved, and there's a further dam upstream. I'm blanking on the name, but that was built in the, pardon me? Yes, thank you very much. Subsequent to that, they're now out of the flood zone. They do not have to buy flood insurance. So I'm curious if, if that is absolute evidence, then why doesn't FEMA, in the case of Balboa Island or parts of Newport Beach, recognize that there's a seawall? And recognize that there is a harbor entrance? So if FEMA is using this nine-foot still-water approach, what do we have as a barrier now? It seems to me, at the present time, it's close to nine feet. So if the seawall goes up, whatever, just as a, for instance, one of the plans, then why would we still have this flood overlay and be buried with this regulatory nightmare that is, as, as previous speaker mentioned, is going to destroy the character of the island or any older part of the city? So to me, I would think, before a whole lot more is done, is we need to determine what's happening in, pardon me, in Laguna Beach, down Laguna Canyon. Is that a flood zone? We've all probably seen that happen in the last couple of decades. So I don't know if this logic that FEMA has seemingly jammed down our throat, or we've accepted, is appropriate. Is it, is it being applied throughout the rest of the United States? And, and what do they pay, living next to massive rivers like Mississippi and Missouri, and certainly the East Coast and the Gulf Coast? We, and again, anecdotal evidence is, we don't have a big problem. And so I think this is a huge overreaction, and I would love to see it all go nigh-nigh, because I don't think it's appropriate that effort and money be spent on something as nebulous as the possibility of 90 years from now that the sea level's going to be at some shynomous. And, and one last point, and believe me, it's not a threat, but is not this action considered legally taking, financial taking, when a regulation is then applied to my property and all of a sudden the property value goes this way?
Thank you, Mr. Houston.
Okay.
Simone, did you want to respond to the, to the point that was made?
There were definitely a lot of points made.
But whether nine-foot still-water?
Right, I mean, FEMA didn't look at the seawall height.
Why not? If they look at it in Huntington Beach, which takes the residents of Huntington Beach out of the flood zone?
Right, I think at the time when they were doing the, the study, you know, it wasn't a very detailed study. It was 40 years ago.
But we're jumping down the throat of having to do all sorts of massive regulatory changes. I didn't, if you want to call it that, or opinion, maybe, some...
Okay, thank you. Sir, did you want to speak? Come to the podium, please.
My name is Jack Northrup, and we live on Balboa Island, at Aggett in the North Bay Front. I recently bought flood insurance for about 1/3 the cost of the FEMA policy. And I also refinanced, and that flood insurance was accepted by the lender. The thing I'd like to ask is, what are the benefits we get out of being in the FEMA program, aside from insurance coverage? It seems obvious that the insurance coverage for California can be bought for less. Mine is about 1/3 of what it was before. And I think we should investigate what benefits we get from FEMA besides the insurance program. And if we can substitute the insurance program, why shouldn't we withdraw from the FEMA restrictions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers that'd like to come forward? Just come on down. And one line up here, one line up there, because we're running a little bit short on time, and I want to make sure we hear everybody wants to talk.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Lee Pearl, a pretty new resident of Balboa Island. And I thought what I would want to do, what I didn't hear this evening was what I call the, kind of the closure of the loop that needed to take place. When we moved to the island, as you found out this evening, there were problems with people not being able to do improvements. I think our association recognized, the Balboa Island Improvement Association, recognized those problems. Listened to the residents, and the result this evening is what you see. The staff has responded with changes to the program that is now benefiting the island. We're able to improve our properties, and our councilman has been tremendously responsible and responsive to the island. We've had multiple meetings. I had the benefit of being on a subcommittee, the FEMA subcommittee, and I think what I've observed tonight is a great improvement, and both staff and our councilmembers should be credited with really helping the island. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Lyle Dawn. My wife and I own a house at 106 Apollina. I've lived in that house about 23 years. I've owned it about 18. It's an older cottage. It was pristine when I bought it, and now it's even more pristine because we've continued to keep it up. And it's a beautiful house, and it's a beautiful cottage, and it's a beautiful indication of some of the architecture that was done on the island in the '30s and '40s. And one of the reasons why people come to Balboa Island, they come for the bay, but they also come for the cottages. You go overseas, you go around the world, you mention, oh, I got a place on Balboa Island. People go, wow, I love the little cottages. Well, they're all going to be gone, and I don't understand it. It doesn't make any sense to me. Not to mention the fact, I'm not happy about the fact, a big, a lot of my equity just went out of my pocket because of some arbitrary rule. Also, to answer your question about what rates are on FEMA insurance, because it's a second home for my wife and I, although we intend to retire here and die in the house, my rates have gone up a staggering, they went from about $1,800 to $3,200, because, one, it's a second home, so they bumped it 25%. And then they decided because there's a garage separate from the house, they could bump it another 25%, treated as a separate structure. So these people are really putting it to us, as far as I'm concerned. As far as the valuation of improving a house, if you can get it done for 300 bucks a square foot, I've never seen it recently. A work is much more expensive than that. I am, I've got a question, and then I'll sit down. And my question is this, I understand that we're in the FEMA program for people getting insurance, and that's great if you want insurance. But if you want to self-insure yourself and you don't want flood insurance, why should you be forced to go along with these rules and regulations? The reason I'm sensitive to this is because in the next five years, my wife and I wanted to move down here. I started looking into last, about a year and a half ago, about making improvements to the house because she's been diagnosed with MS, and I wanted to put an elevator in the house and put a bedroom upstairs. Well, lo and behold, I could do about $60,000 worth of work to my house under the old formula. Now, the new formula, I probably can do more, but still, that's pretty egregious, that I should be looking at something like that. So my question is this, people who don't want insurance, flood insurance, are willing to self-insure, why should they be obligated to these rules? It's great if you want flood insurance, but if you don't want it, why do I have to go with everybody? And why do other people have to go with everybody? I mean, the cottage people care about their homes, and it's a big part of what Balboa Island and Balboa is. You take that away, and what do you got? You know, would you take Carmel and make it into high-rise? I, I just don't understand the lack of understanding or consideration for the preciousness of what we have down here. Thank you very much, and I look forward to the question on the insurance.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please come, y'all come down and line up, because we're going to run out of time here, and I want those that want to speak to be able to speak. So be ready to go, and just line up behind... to speak, so be ready to go, and just line up behind this lady here. We've used both podiums, and, yes, sir.
Mayor, council, staff, I'm Terry Jansen. I live on Balboa Island. In fact, I have two houses on Balboa Island. The first thing I want to say is I want to commend the staff and the council for reacting so quickly to this issue. It's probably been just a little bit more than a month since Simone was at the initial meeting, and we've had just a huge change, and we really appreciate that. This morning, I had, I was fortunate enough to have breakfast with Ed Selich and Jeff Herdman, and we discussed this very topic. And in that discussion, you kind of alluded just a few minutes ago to this fact, but if we raise the cost of construction to, say, $350 or $400, it really causes all these other issues to go away that might be exempt, like windows, roof, countertops, and cabinets, and those kinds of things. So I would just ask staff to consider that as they're working on their deadline for Friday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Anne Marie. I'm a homeowner on Little Island. I've been there for almost 30 years. One thing I'd like to bring up that I haven't really heard in the discussion at all, let me just start by saying I'm a member of the CERT program, which is our fire department here, and there's probably other people here on Balboa Island. If you don't know, it's the Civilian Emergency Response Team, and we look at disasters, and one of the things that the fire department has told us for years is that our biggest potential disaster is earthquake, and in case of low-lying areas, liquefaction. And we've had many, many drills and many, many issues with that. So when we're talking about flood and we're only looking at sea level rise or storms, which everybody is concerned about as only maybe being a 100-year event, I think that it might be prudent to talk to the fire department and ask them about liquefaction, because you have a whole area of city government that is very, very concerned about that and is preparing for that. I'd like to know if there was an earthquake here, since we're on an earthquake zone. You can't determine where liquefaction would be. You can't determine the extent of it, whether it would be a little or a lot, but I think that that would be considered flood, and if it is, I don't know. That's what I'd like to know. If it's not considered flood, then maybe you've answered my question for me.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yeah, I'm Jim Destor from Balboa Island. I was looking at a staff report presented to the Tydlands Management Committee on March 16, 2012, and I noticed on that that without even going into any ocean levels rising or whatnot, the report basically said that based on the 210 flood projections or tide projections, that a 100-year flood would damage or impact 514 properties on Balboa Island and about 29 homes. And then it showed a projection of 2025, which is just 12 years away. The number of impacted parcels would be 1,176, and the number of impacted buildings would be 235. And then this report basically had some key recommendations. One of them was, if needed, construct six-inch cap on existing seawalls as an interim measure. And then the cost of that was, there were different options, but the option that was recommended was a mechanical extension of the existing seawall cap by six inches, and the price was, range was $3.3 million to $3.63 million. My question is, is any consideration being given at all in the short term to raising the walls by six inches?
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the city council. Mr. Selich.
Well, thank you, Mayor. We're running out of time here. First of all, I think that the new cost per square foot and the depreciation schedule has helped out a lot, but I would like to see if we can, you know, find ways to push that up a bit, because if that's solving 80% of the problem, and we can do things with what's included or not included or reevaluating that $300 a square foot, if we can get up to 95% or something like that of the current problem, I think that goes a long way to solve part of the problem that we're dealing with. The other part of the problem is the flood insurance rates that folks are paying there. They're extremely high. I think it's been brought to question as to whether the FEMA studies are accurate, and it would seem to me, given the cost, you've heard some of the quotes of the insurance that people are paying, that, and it is a city-mandated program because we adopted the ordinance, so it seems to me that $50,000 would be a rather modest investment to validate the FEMA program, the FEMA study that was done. It was, I'm guessing it was done on a generalized basis for all of Orange County and didn't take into account some of the local considerations that have been raised here today. So it seemed to me it would be a worthwhile investment to go and validate that study or find out, you know, if it's correct or not. And based on that, then we'd probably, at that point, be able to make more intelligent decisions on some of the other ideas that have come forth. But it seems to me those two things are something that would be in our best interest to tackle in the short term here.
My only concern would be what we heard about by Selia, where they made all the improvements, asked FEMA to come in, and they got more properties included in the flood plain.
Well, that's interesting you say that, because that point was brought up by the FEMA expert at the Balboa Island meeting, and I went and I asked him after the meeting if the city did the study, we don't have to give it to FEMA, and so it's our information, and if it comes out worse, we just keep it.
Well, if we believe our first presentation, it's likely to come out worse. I would, there's a lot of conflicting issues here. I mean, we've, first of all, I sympathize very much for the people on Balboa Island, because they're stuck between a rock and a hard place on this. Some people can get alternate insurance, some people apparently can't, and the reason why we're in the FEMA program is because it provides a means for insurance when the market dries up, and as we've heard, the market can be volatile, and if you can't get insurance, somebody can't buy your house. And so that really has a big impact on your property values and on the values of the entire island. Now, we've all seen, you know, and sit there and hit ourselves on the side of the head and say, why do they keep building those little towns on the Mississippi Valley that flood every year when the river floods? I mean, that's why FEMA has put this in place, is because people kept rebuilding those little Iowa towns in North Dakota and Minnesota, year after year, and they kept getting flooded every time the river flooded. And now they're looking at very big bills in Long Island and Staten Island and still paying for New Orleans. So there is a federal interest in trying to not have to rebuild the same communities more than once, and we need to sort of be mindful of that, because we, as taxpayers, pay for those bills also. But, Mr. Selich, I think you have some very excellent ideas in terms of how we can go about this, and if we can look at how we change this formula, I think we can give our people on the island who are looking to do some immediate improvements some relief from this problem.
I would just add to that. I absolutely agree, and I would add a third one, and do whatever we could do to encourage private sector firms, insuring firms, to come in and provide programs as well, and to give some competition. If we can eliminate the requirements or soften the requirements for ourselves and stay in the FEMA program and then have other ways to insure, that might be the best of all.
Any comments? All right, seeing none, staff, do you think you have some guidance on that? And let's coordinate with, particularly with Councilmember Selich, and let's see if we can make some positive movement here. Thank you all for coming tonight. I know this is an important issue. Do every one of you have a home on Balboa? Thank you. Can we get through the...
Mr. Mayor, could I just make a suggestion on that?
Yes, Senator Gardner.
That this, the residential lot merger, the whole idea of making some changes came out of the planning commissions addressing the issues on the Ocean Boulevard project. What would be the idea, a sense of sending it to Planning Commission first and have them take the initial look at it and then bring it to us?
I'm surprised you didn't do that, but...
Is that we were going to bring forward to you this evening, back to the Planning Commission, to consider for their recommendations. We'd be happy to do that.
Does anybody on the council object to that?
Yes.
All right. Is anybody in the public that'd like to speak on this matter before we send it back to the Planning Commission? All right, seeing none. I think we've got some consensus there. So now we're going to go to public comment on study session and regular meeting items, closed session. Any public comment? All right, seeing none, we're going to adjourn to closed session.
Announce what we're...
I'm sorry?
Announce what we're doing in closed session, remember?
Oh, and we need an announcement on what we're doing in closed session?
We'll be considering the items on the regular...